Under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, when you're ready, let's do roll call.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Han?
Present.
Councilmember Cox?
Present.
Councilmember Stubble?
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han?
I'm here.
Mayor Wyatt?
Present.
You have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Regina, for fixing that. Great. Next on our topic here for our special regular meeting is approval of the agenda. And we've got an amendment that needs to be made.
Sure, Mayor. I'll propose first that we move to approve the agenda and then can make that amendment.
Okay. Call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a second on that?
We need a second.
Right. Sorry, jumping ahead. I'm so excited.
Second.
Okay. Okay, now we'll call for the question. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Mayor, I think?
Yes.
Moving to approve, moving to amend. We shouldn't go down.
Oh, right. You're right. Sorry, I'm just so excited again.
You're really.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and second moved by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Larson. Now we need to address the amendment. Promise I'll get it right.
So, Mayor, I'm sorry for throwing you off. I would move that we amend the agenda on six B new business action items. The amount there is incorrect. That's the correct amount for the total cost here, but the payment that they're requesting this time around is $23,619.12. So I move that we amend to reflect that the payment being requested is that lower amount, not the full amount.
I noticed that also. Thank you.
Great. And can I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. So amended, proposed by Councilmember Stubble, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Now, honest to goodness, we will vote to approve the agenda. And we'll start with you, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Awesome. And that passes. Great. We'll move on to Mayor and Council updates. Start with you, Councilmember Josh Han.
I have nothing this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Geez Louise, I'm off my game today. My apologies. Communication from the floor. If anyone would like to speak, please approach the microphone, state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded and all comments will be limited to three minutes. If anyone would like to come forward for public comment, please do so now. Okay, not seen any moves towards the front. Okay, and now we will move to Mayor and Council updates. And again, start with you, Councilman Josh Han.
This evening. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't have any updates either.
Okay, that's totally thrown off my game. Councilmember Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. I also don't have any updates.
Okay. For you?
I'll break the chain here. I just, on the planning board, we're discussing zoning. And that's no updates on that, but that's what we're discussing right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things. Once again, appreciate the the street department getting out and getting going with the potholes. That's been a wonderful deal there. Welcome to to spring thing. And then also the Propoja Conservation District is having their garden expo this Saturday at the high school gym from nine o'clock to three. Besides the displays, there's going to be several educational classes regarding gardening. So come and join me and learn how to garden. That's it.
All right, thank you. I've got just a couple. I'll also echo it's both tulips and potholes are popping up. And again, I'm seeing the crews out and working, so thank you for that. Much appreciated. And also I want to call out, really appreciate what city staff has done for our meetings. If you go to where our meetings are recorded, so if you click on the little kind of icon, play icon, that takes you to this recording. If you go to the view details, what's now available there is, it takes you to a webpage where you'll see the agenda packet in the middle. And on the left-hand side, you'll see the blue headings. So rather than trying to sort through the the meeting and try to get to the spot you want to listen to, you can go directly to that section. So that's a new feature that they're implementing, and I think that's pretty awesome. Again, with our goal of being, wanting to make our meetings all the more accessible and transparent. I think that's going to be a really helpful tool for folks. So thank you, city staff. It's an extra step for that to happen and very much appreciated. And that is it for me. And we'll move on to staff updates. And we'll start with you, interim chief slash captain Wa.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little hesitant on what I want to say, only in the sense of I had mentioned us not being ready for a major event. And as most of you know, we ended up deep in the middle of one in Riverton. So all things are good. We're doing an after-action review next week with all entities involved and the pros, the cons, the goods, the bads. We're moving forward. As you travel through the week, you'll probably see 80% of my staff traveling between here and Riverton as we're actively training some close quarters battle in room clearing and things like that. Ironically, it was on the schedule before their standoff, but we're progressing forward and things are good. So I won't have much other than that.
Lance, what do you have for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Construction projects are moving forward well. Hopefully, we're seeing tank and pump station work wrapping up. Right now, we're making the major replacement underneath the highway at Sinks Canyon under the tank. So hoping as we're sitting on the new pump station and running off of that tank for a couple of days here, everything goes well. So moving forward, should see that wrapping up shortly. And then McFarland Drive, you know, boring work, all the stuff up by the highways going well. But also wanted to bring up last week, Mayor Wyatt and I were at a grants class in Riverton. And right now, there's a lot of federal grants going away, ones that we were specifically targeting, and we're not sure what's showing up behind that. And so once we have more information on what we might be looking at, we rely on that so heavily to get big expensive projects done. I mean, we've been paying pennies on the dollar to get our infrastructure built here locally, as you saw in my presentation. So if some of those funding sources don't exist, we'll have to talk about in the future if some of the projects we're looking at are reasonable or if they get put on pause or go away. So not all the best news there, but we'll keep looking and see what opportunities we have.
Thank you for that. I noticed in the budget we've got in front of us, the significant increase for the Fifth Street project end to end, more than doubled in price. So yeah, shocking to see. And that's the hand we've got, so we'll work with it.
Mayor? Yes, if I may. Lance, I apologize in advance for the question, but do you have a new estimate for starting on Lincoln Street?
Starting on Lincoln?
For High Country to start on Lincoln.
Yeah, they have the, I'm hoping next week is what they're looking at. So they're finishing up this major construction and getting substantial completion on the pump station project. And they'll be balancing work on Lincoln. And I think they're going to do the ditch work first because the ditches are turning on quickly and they have some crossings to repair before water starts coming through. So they're getting a little bit further behind than their original schedule at this moment.
Sure, thank you. I've noticed a few businesses, probably quite a few really, but I've just seen a few of them that have put up signs with plans for parking and informing their customers. And so I'm glad to see it looks like that outreach was pretty substantive.
Great.
And helpful for them. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Regina?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of piggyback on what Lance said, Ann and I had a grant opportunities conflag, and there are not very many opportunities open right now. The only one that we have a statement of interest in on is another TAP, and that's Transportation Alternatives Program. And that would be for the second half of the Gannett Peak Safe Routes to School Sidewalk. If you remember, we already had a TAP grant for that, but the cost and the right of way made it such that we had to break it into two phases. So this would be for phase two. That does not do until July 15th, but I just want to let you know that is the only grant right now on the table that we're looking at.
Thank you. Any questions for Regina? Okay, Shari, I know we get time with you later tonight, but updates?
I just wanted to give you a heads up that service line warranties, that's the company that we that we have vetted that issues the insurance for water lines. They'll be sending out their next, they call it a campaign. So if you hear anybody asking, they are vetted through us. Recently, we got a call from another company, somebody else was doing it. They were not, they didn't go through the City of Landor. So there are other competitors that are mailing that information to our customers.
Great. Comments or questions for Shari? And Rochelle?
Parks and Rec, Lori told me today that the summer seasonal hiring for the programming, as in camp counselors and tennis, track, things of that nature, is full, but they're still accepting applications for maintenance workers at the parks and cemeteries. So those are still available if anyone's interested. Other than that, if anyone has questions for me?
Any questions?
What's the age limit on the maintenance work? Is that the 18 and above?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, with that, we'll move on to our new business action items. So the first one is vote to appoint the applicant to fill the vacant Ward Two City Council member position. So our process for that is that we will appoint the person tonight. We'll do the same. We need to call for nominations three times. At any one of those three, you can nominate one of our five excellent candidates. We'll then vote, go down the road. You can state the name of the candidate you prefer. And then that candidate will be sworn in on the May 13th meeting. And we worked with staff. They know to make sure we've got a Chromebook ready for them and making sure they get an agenda packet so they can start right in. As soon as they're sworn in, they'll move up here and join us. So with that, I'll call for nominations. Mayor? So Mr. Han, Councilman Han?
First and foremost, all of the candidates for the open council seat were excellent. They were all, they all had great answers and all produced information that would work as a base for the Lander Council position. This was not easy for me. There was only one difference between all of the candidates. One of them has been in our council chambers month after month, learning and listening, and even engaging with the council. This is why my nomination and vote goes to Chad Cassidy. He stepped up months ago and even stated that he would keep on coming to our council meetings no matter what. This is why he deserves to be our next council person. He is already dedicated. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. One nomination and Councilmember Stubble.
Well, Mayor, I was going to make the same nomination, so instead I'll just comment my gratitude for those who did apply. An incredible slew of talented folks who had displayed a lot of commitment to their service to the community already and that they're willing to do even this greater step into responsibility is just deeply gratifying. It was, is going to be a very hard decision to make, and I hope we find other roles and committees and boards for those who are not going to be selected tonight to continue to serve Lander in a greater depth. So thank you to everybody who applied and who came into the interview process.
Thank you. Second call for nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Councilman Cox, and I would like to nominate Daniel McLean. Again, likewise, I think all of the candidates are excellent. Two sort of rose, you know, to the top for me, and Daniel's one of those. So I'd like to nominate him.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think we need a second for these. I think what we do will, you know, go by person by person, and then you'll state the name. Yep, and third call for nominations. Okay, hearing none. Councilmember Josh Han? Who's your choice?
Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you. Councilmember Stubble?
Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox?
Daniel McLean.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Han? Thank you. And Councilmember Larson?
Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you. All right. So with four votes to Mr. Chad Cassidy, congratulations, you will be our next council person. Thank you. So we'll see you May 13th.
Mayor Wyatt, may I just make a comment with my vote for, I want to just extend my complete support of Mr. Cassidy as well. He's going to be a great addition to our council. So thank you for that.
Agreed. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to B authorize the contractor's application for payment number one to Alexander Excavation, Inc. in the amount of $23,619.12 dated April 10th, 2025 for the Bishop Randall Water and Paving Improvements Project. Could I get a motion?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
The move by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Any discussion? Okay, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. And with that, we will adjourn our special regular council meeting.
Mayor, you need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes. We do need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
But don't go anywhere. And a second. Second to adjourn our special regular.
Guys, because of no second.
We got to stay. It wasn't anticlimactic. How quickly that? Keep talking.
So?
Second.
Okay, now we've got a motion in a second. So, Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Okay, now we will move on to our work session. So Shari, this is, we're turning it over to you.
I'm gonna first give you the highlights of the entire budget of what's contained in there, and then we can go through it by page.
Great.
If you all have questions. This is a balanced budget. In our unrestricted reserve, we have $3.8 million. It was your desire to have half of six months' worth of what our normal general fund budget was, which is about $6 million. So we're covered there. We still have $814,000 for flood mitigation, and that's separate from that $386. Funding the future retirees, we have $411,000 and some change for general fund and $450,000 in the enterprise fund for funding future retirees. Property tax adjustments, Tara and I had quite a few emails back and forth about what this was going to do for us and kind of a guessing game. She, her last number to me was $170,000. I was much more conservative than that and cut mine by $250,000. We should still be above that because the assessed valuations that I use, the numbers don't come out until 6-1. So I always use last year's assessed valuation. So it should be, we should still have a safe cushion there for that, for that purpose. Sales tax is up about 2% over our last year's collection. So for my budget for the current year, we're in surplus of about $57,000. I'm still conservative on my sales tax because it hasn't been large increments of increases. So I'm still, my budgeted number is less. The legislature again approved the additional money for the supplemental distribution. I did not mainstream that money. I have that going to our equipment and building replacement fund. I don't think we should get used to living on that because it's not money that we can always guarantee. We have to go back and ask for every two years, and our normal is about $980,000. So that extra will not, is not part of the, it's in the budget, but it's on that reserve line item. Your capital projects are not included in this. The senior center and the optional and the airport, those will do at the time of the budget. Golf course is funded at the same amount. This does include, Chris put in for a fire truck at the fire department, a million, a million dollars, $950,000. It does include that, so that's why our gross income looks higher of the $8 million because it does include that extra million for a grant. We did have it in this last year's budget also, and we did not get awarded that. Staff would again like any overage for this fiscal year to go to funding our equipment and building repair line item, which is currently the 1.4 million. Right now, we're sitting in surplus of almost $900,000, but that's only because of the timing. May and June are our most expensive months. So we won't end up at that point by any means. But we've just received most of all of our money for federal mineral royalties and for our direct distribution. This includes a 3% COLA for our wages. This increased the payroll burden by $135,616. We also changed how we're doing on-call pay for the water department. It was a manual process where if if an employee had to work on-call, the payroll was always manipulating their hourly rate. And there's just too much room for human error that we eliminated the on-call pay and added it to their base pay. So that was also an increase of why our, that was a larger number. The cost of living actual numbers came out on Friday. I had already done this budget. And I usually average for the entire year, and it was actually 4.75 instead of the 3% COLA. This would be about a $56,000 increase in the general fund, which I don't think we would have a problem finding or making adjustment for if that was your desire to give the actual cost of living rather than the 3% cost of living. We did see an increase in our in our insurance by 3%. I always plug any new employees in as a family. And we had several employees come in at single or not utilizing our insurance, so we had a savings for our insurance on that part of it. We had a small increase in our retirement. So now employees are paying 3.43 and police pay 3.73 of theirs. There are 52 budgeted positions in this place. We only have the one open position in the police department. That is a funded line item. I have added an additional $50,000 in the general fund and in the split enterprise fund for the person that replaces me using, just as a place, as a placeholder, using current monies. Now, if monies ended up not coming in like we thought, we could still take that from that fund reserve for future retirees that we've been paying for, that we've been putting in that account. If we had monies come in that weren't. The insurance increase for the employees for a health plan for annually is $147.36. And there's currently 16 employees on that. This budget also includes funding the HRA accounts of $1,000 per employee. We had a real slight increase in the workers' comp, but we're still down overall from where we have been. Next five years, we have 22 people eligible for retirement, eight of them in the police department. The projects funded with the SRF money, all of those monies, if you looked, if you looked at it ahead of time, the enterprise account monies are quite large in comparison. And it's because we have those SRF projects in there. That includes McFarland, which I hope will be done before the end of this fiscal year, but it's in there. Fifth Street, Buena Vista, Baldur Creek, and the rest of the meter replacement project. The Lincoln Street is also in there. Those are ARPA funds. Those are not SRF funds. And the bit, and I have, have a line item in there for saving for future, our future loan payments we have as these projects come due. As soon as a project's done, we get charged interest from each draw as they take it. Then when the project's completed, our first loan payment is due one year later. So we're saving so that we can afford those loan payments, but so that we can also pay all of that interest that we've accrued up until that time before. So we're amortizing interest on top of the payments.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Page one, do you guys just want to go over questions? Do you want to have questions?
Shari, just a quick comment. So you're saying that rather than amortizing principal and interest, the way you're doing it, all's we're doing is amortizing principal. Is that correct?
That's what we would like, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so historically, and we did this the last time we did projects, we put aside money. And it's a half a million dollars because those project costs have increased. So if all those projects in a perfect world were to finish in the, in that next time period, these projects won't be done until '27. So in the, we wouldn't be starting until '28. But that loan, loan payment for those projects without forgiveness is about $1.3 million.
Yeah.
So it's important for us to be able to afford those payments that we put the money away. Because, I mean, like the one, one project went to $14 million. And I mean, they all doubled from the $45 million when we first went down to slib to $89 million.
Yeah.
That's quite an increase.
Yeah.
Which made it, which made it more expensive because when we were planning these out, we were thinking they would, we'd knock out three. You know, a loan payment might be $500,000. Now the costs have, you know, doubled. One, one alone was the $14 million. So the debt that we could incur, you know, we could have to slow, slow the payments or slow the projects down in the next few years after that, just because we'll have other loans dropping off so we can use that towards that payment. But assuming a $1.3 million loan payment is substantial increase in our, in our expenses for the enterprise fund.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If, if I could suggest, if we could just go through page by page, and then if somebody has some comments, you know, that would work well for me. I don't know about everybody else.
Agreed. I think that's what we did last time, and that seemed pretty, pretty helpful. And Councilmember Cox, since we've got the budget up on the big screen, you're a bit smaller now. So please feel free anytime, just unmute and ask a question because it's a little harder to see if you've got a question or a hand raised.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, on page one, you will also notice I really decreased my gas taxes. They really are, have not, are not coming in even close to what I had for last year's budget. I think we'll probably end up at the gas tax at about where my budget is this year. I had $200,000. I really think it's going to end up coming in at about $157,000. So I, I did not increase that one much. And you can also see in that sales tax number, I had budgeted the 1.9 million. I think we might come in at 1.94, but I still left my budget conservative on that just because, just the way people are buying and shopping, I've seen that number decreasing. The other thing, lottery taxes, the, why that one's so different is because when the lotteries are larger, of course, they sell more. And they haven't had large lotteries that, that, that one's a hard one to predict. And then you can see where the firefighter grant is in, in on that one.
Okay, question that I have. Do we need to go through you or just can we just?
No, I think it's going to be, that sounds really cumbersome for all the questions we'll have tonight.
Okay, you talked about the diesel tax and the gas tax. Is that the tax that's collected at the pumps? Is that correct? Okay, so is the traffic, the transportation, everything just going down? Is that, is that what you're seeing?
I, it's, it's like 10, the last, this last month was $10,000, when it would average like 16. I don't know if people just aren't traveling, that money's tight, that they're not. But I've never seen them that low, to be that low, that much of a change. And, and both in, in gas and diesel.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if you had any visions on why that was taking place. Okay, thank you.
No crystal ball on that one.
Yep.
Any other questions on page one?
A minor one, Shari, for me in the franchise request. I know this is a minor dollar amount, but I don't think as landlines are decreasing, we're going to see quite that number. You know, it seems like just having that at 2,000 instead of 4,000 seems appropriate.
I think it'd be closer to four because we still have, they only pay us quarterly, so we still have two more. We haven't received two, two quarters yet. Just the timing of the way they pay. I still think we'll be close to the four.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Shari, just a comment. Thanks for running these conservative numbers, including with
Shari, just a comment, thanks for running these conservative numbers, including with the property tax adjustments as well. I appreciate, starting with that point, and then we can feel like there's better news coming in if we get lucky later in the year, but knowing the gas taxes are going down as well, that's certainly troubling, so I appreciate the way you've approached this.
Yeah, thanks. Smart.
Okay, page two. A big, a big standout on page two is interest revenues. So since we have, since we've been saving and putting money aside for the optional projects, that money's been sitting in the bank, so we've been earning four percent. So we should very well exceed my budgeted number this year, because we're getting about fifty thousand dollars a month in interest. I still kept it a, a little higher, just because that money will still be in the bank, because we won't do all those projects, you know, this next fiscal year, it will be phased out a little bit more, but that, that's the largest amount of interest we've ever made in since I've been here. And it's averaging four percent. Any questions on page two?
Just one quick one. The, the Parks and Rec event fees and the user fees, is that one, one in the same thing, just renamed or?
No, user fees. Well, event fees were when we were trying to collect for a number of participants, right, for the that's a Lance question, because I don't think we're doing that anymore.
Yeah, I think that we've just gone to the standard fees. So you're saying in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, there was revenue, John? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
That dropped off? Yeah, I agree, that's probably all falling into user fees is where that's being booked, but we probably still could separate those. Events are different than user fees, typically user fees are the ball fields and the different, you know, ten dollars per, per person, per whatever it may be. And event fees would be more, the park is rented and
Okay.
that, so we can look back into that one and see if that's separate, or they're all being booked together now.
And I want to add additional clarification. That was the one year that we did change our fee schedule to include events as ten percent of your take. And then you guys went back to charging per participant. So that's the difference there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, page two?
I had just a couple. So one for the Fremont County Rec Board. They made the decision not to distribute any recreation funds and keep it all for their general fund, so that one should be changed to a zero. And that'd be nice, I, I think we should have been notified by the Lander District Rec Board what the exact dollar amount.
I asked Ann about that one. Those were numbers that Ray Jane had given me of everything that we had put in.
Right, and we did get our award for a Sinks Canyon Camp from the Lander District Rec Board, and that was at twenty-five thousand dollars.
It was twenty, okay.
It was.
Oh, that's awesome.
And then there is no opportunity, you're right, for a Fremont County Rec Board at seven thousand.
Shari, I had a question on program registration. What is that? And then why is the actual this year, is that a typo for actual this year? Or why is there that large discrepancy?
Program registration, is that what you're looking at? We didn't have, we didn't run parks that, well, this is for Sinks Canyon Camp, so we have, really haven't collected too much yet.
Okay, great, so that's only Sinks Canyon?
Yeah, that's majority is that, is Sinks Canyon Camp.
And then why are we projecting such an increase for the future budget from what we budgeted for this year? Is there a plan to expand it or lengthen it or something?
I actually was looking at my twenty-four being the higher. Current year, you can't really compare yet because we haven't collected it.
That's okay. Thank you.
And also, we do collect on behalf of some other programs, and then we write them a check. So they use our booking software, and it's money in, money out versus us keeping any of that. So I think basketball is that way and some of those other programs.
Okay, thank you.
My, my last question was for the community center. I mean, I'm pleased to see that you're anticipating significant increase. So we're already at ninety thousand, and yeah, we have May, June with big months of usage, so are we just seeing more, more and more usage for the community center at this point?
Yes, and multi-events where they're booking like the big room and meeting rooms. So we'll see how that one works out these next few events, but yes. And then that is on the cost to be increased also.
Okay.
Any more questions on page two? Page three, you'll see that the transfer reserve, that eighty thousand, that's coming from Mount Hope Cemetery, they're going to put in a new columbarium. So that money will be transferred out when you pay into your perpetual care. That's a long-term asset, so we'll take that out of that fund to pay for that new columbarium, and they're about eighty thousand. General government, that's the line item that added the fifty thousand, that I put fifty thousand between for my replacement, just as a placeholder if we find someone. Any other questions on page three?
Yeah, if we don't find someone. That's, can we all, can we vote on that?
Any other questions for page three?
A question on the decrease in community development.
Decrease. We had forty, we changed it to fifth, took it back to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and, and what's the thought process behind that?
She wasn't, she's only spent nine and wasn't going to come close to spending forty, so she was totally comfortable with taking it to fifteen.
Great.
Well, I appreciate that. Please tell Ann, thank you, it's a tough one to see decrease. I know she's spending wisely, but of course, as we start to talk about where we need to see some cuts in services, I hate to say it, but that's, that's one that we probably look at. So glad to see her making, it's a small amount, but it's meaningful. She's taking care of those funds so well.
Page four. Again, you can see that fund equipment replacement line item. Excuse me, so you can see in this current year, I have five hundred and eighty-two thousand and some change. We've only spent two twelve, though those new assets that you awarded a couple weeks ago for the cars, and that will probably use up most of that. So we won't, won't have to dip into the one point four million yet in that equipment replacement and item, but you can see that that extra that we're getting for the supplemental distribution, that's the line item that that one is sitting on. You can see that this still has the thousand dollars per employee for the HRA account. The increase in the community center maintenance is because we added the outside, the person that takes care of the outside of the facility. That's why you saw an increase in that. Community center improvements, they're working on a building improvement schedule, so all of those will come out of the equipment building replacement line item and not be specific to sitting in any department.
A question I had, and, and this will cover across a few of our different expense centers, but Rocky Mountain Power has yet another rate increase scheduled to go into effect. I think the Public Service Commission passed that. So I wonder if we should not be increasing all of these line items, especially for some of our larger electrical users. They have it as zero for the coming year in terms of an increase.
I think we'll still be fine, just because we're always between gas and electric. We end up be, being all right to our budget number, just because it's like if one is always lower, one is accommodates to it. Because really, remember that the bottom line item is what we're looking at, and you can overspend on a specific line item, but not, you want, don't want to your bottom line item. Your bottom total. Okay, page five. We did increase insurance, insurance costs of expense, and you can see that it, that line item went over this year to my seventy thousand, it went to eighty-five thousand. Community programs, it has us giving the fifteen thousand to the chamber and the youth services at thirty-five thousand. Prisoner care, Judge McKee has been sending more people to jail, so you can see that that budget is really on the rise, and we still have three more months of prisoner care, and they've been averaging about ten thousand dollars a month. Do you all have any questions on page five?
I'm curious about the jury trial contingencies going down so much, again, pretty small numbers overall, but.
You know, that's just a budget preference of the judge. And all my time, we have never used that, but she likes to put a line item in there for that amount.
So this is more realistic now?
I don't think it comes close to the, what the cost would, but it's a placeholder for her. Police Department, the large item, the one that they had was the professional technical services increase, that was due to a new TASER contract. Any other questions on page six?
I do, I do have a question, Shari, thank you. Have we negotiated the contract for dispatch with the, with Fremont County Government?
Right now, we're still working under the same contact, contract.
So for next fiscal year?
I'm going to let Chief answer that.
Councilman Cox, so the way that the current contract was set up is it's in effect until one or more of the parties give notice that it's no longer in effect, so there's no timeframe on it. We actually are in the middle of dealing with some of the dispatch things. It's still super preemptive, so I'm hesitant to speak much on it, but we're in the process of looking at alternatives for us for dispatch centers and, and what we're doing and where our money's going. I'm asking for a lot of answers from the Sheriff's Office that currently I'm not getting from them. A lot of it is the breakdown in cost and what that looks like. So as far as the contract goes, it reads as it's in effect till one or more parties give notice that they're no longer a part of it.
Okay, I just was curious, due to the recent discussion through the, the county commissioners with their reduction in revenue, if they would be asking for an increase to that dollar amount.
I'd be more than happy to discuss it with you, Councilman Cox, and probably at a later date in detail to give you a better idea of what that looks like moving forward.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions, page six? Page seven, you can see, this is the fire department where they have their line item for new assets, contains that engine replacement. And they have cut their budget because I want to remind you that the property taxes do affect the fire department and the number of mills that they also collect. So the general fund will end up supplementing the fire department budget, because the mills that will collect with that adjustment won't be enough to cover the total expenses of the fire department.
And is that new this year? I understood that we were, I thought we were already doing some extra above and beyond. I mean, not above and beyond, I should say that way, but like that we were covering some from the general fund.
We have.
It's not that they were dependent solely on.
If they have new assets, we have been. They try to, but I've been keeping a spreadsheet. It's one, it's really what messes them up is when they buy the new asset, because they haven't accumulated enough reserve to cover that new ass, purchasing that new asset. So we have been supplementing them, but we, with these property tax cuts, it will be more.
Yeah, that'll hit them, exactly. Those are some of the services that will have challenges.
Right, thank you. So Shari, I think you mean like for that fire truck, if that grant goes through, there is a fifty thousand dollar match that's needed, and that would likely be provided by the city as opposed to the three mills that the fire department gets.
Right, and that's a very competitive grant. We've put in for that grant so many years and, and not gotten it, but they put in for it each year, but it's very competitive.
Question, can you explain the workers' comp fund there, the eight hundred and forty-eight?
We also, besides the, Chris's workers' comp, we pay workers' comp for all of the volunteer firemen. We pay retirement and workers' comp, so that's why those numbers look a little funky for what that one person makes is because we cover all of the fire, firemen.
So hasn't that happened in the past? I mean, what, why are we showing an eight hundred and forty?
We have, we don't pay it, we don't pay it at, we don't pay it monthly how we pay our normal one, we pay it on that, I'm questioning whether they have it coded correctly. I will have to look into that one.
Typically, it's played quarterly for workers' comp.
Workers' comp for fire department quarterly. Yeah, I will look at that one.
Yeah, the, the number just stuck out, stuck out at me.
It sticks out to me too.
Okay.
Any other questions on page seven?
Not so much a comment, Shari, I appreciate in, in this that we're helping a little bit more from the general fund for our fire crew, but it does give me pause to think about what will this look like in fiscal twenty-seven and beyond as potentially even more property tax cuts happen. And then, and what do we need to do to keep the department whole?
Right. Legitimate concern.
Well, it's going to be a concern for everybody, especially the fire districts, because they're the ones who, they're, they're, that is what they're living on. So fire districts are really affected, and, and nobody's got any backfill in its legislature, so.
Shari, I have one too, and maybe Lance to do. Why do we have a line item for clothing allowance and uniforms?
Uniforms is different than the clothing allowance. The clothing allowance is they get paid per meeting seventy-five dollars, and that's their officer pay and per training. So it's different, it's, it's, and if they make over the six hundred, they get a ten ninety-nine, that's why they're different. Uniforms is actually buying uniforms for, for them. The other one is just, they're, it's for their pay night for them. They get paid per meeting and per training.
Right, and we title, but it's titled clothing allowance?
Pardon me?
But it's titled clothing allowance, you know, it's for meetings?
I feel like that would be smart to change that more accurately, reflect what it is.
Is there a reason, yeah, that we don't understand?
We have always, in all my years, that is what it has been called, is but it's for pay night.
Have to mull on that one.
Page eight. Streets, you can see we've condensed all, we condensed all of their codes, so that's why most of it sits in operations and maintenance. Remember, this is not optional tax money. Optional tax money does sit in a different department. This is just the street, street guys, actually.
A question from me on this, so when we are paying local contractors to help on our big snow events, where is, where is that included in this?
It comes out of that operations budget, so you can see in fiscal year and in twenty-three, the hundred and eighty-three thousand, we, that was the bad snowstorm year where we spent a hundred and fifty thousand to pay all those contractors to move the snow.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, page eight? Page nine. Again, improvements, we don't have it in that building repair line item, because we have that, we'll take that out of the, our reserve account number. Shop, you can see we've decreased vehicle repair, since we've been replacing so many vehicles, and we have newer vehicles, and they have warranties on them. Our shop repairs are less, and you can see that really in the current year, what we've spent. Any other questions on page nine?
I had just had a question on what a Cobra light was, but I think it was explained to me that that's the, the highlights there on Main Street. Okay.
Yes.
So more, I think Lance is a question for you, but some of those things like you mentioned, we need to fix the junction box for the lights at the Babe Ruth Field. And hopefully we get some grant funding for that, but we still have to pay some. So are things like that all can, included in the building repair and maintenance and you know, all the upgrades that have been done for the Loiter Restrooms, et cetera?
No, those unanticipated items are coming out of equipment replacement often when we get there. And so, you know, advising us to, you know, jump on the fields at softball, you know, that's where those line items are coming out of right now. So it's really a depreciation, where do you want to spend it line item? And Shari's not throwing me under the bus, but she should, because we're looking at the five-year plan for equipment replacement and going to try to get you some facilities planning and then vehicle planning, now that we've purchased these new vehicles. We want to give you guys a projection of the next five years of what we're looking at. There's major roof repairs that need to be done on facilities right now to put a Band-Aid on them. So, you know, looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars just in that line item this year to keep what we have, then we'll bring you the facilities master plan, have some discussion on that. But we have to kind of pick a direction where we're going to go on major facilities, repair and maintenance, and then also the next five years of equipment, so that's coming.
I did not throw you under the bus.
I appreciate it.
I still need you.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions on page nine? Uh, page ten. Now, page ten, we did list out new assets in there just because we kind of had a discussion with the county where they felt like we weren't using all of our mills. So we're actually specifying out when we, and we need to replace some equipment in the um weed and pest department. So that one does include weed and pest. Um, that does not have a person, um, it just has part-time wages right now. Um, Kevin Green's wages currently are coming out of the Parks and Rec. We will cut, split his wages up a bit as soon as uh weed and pest season starts because he'll be in charge of that until then. Again, we are consolidating account numbers, so that's why the turf and maintenance line item looks larger than number because we got rid of all the trash collects, all those little um O and M type expenses and consolidate it onto the maintenance line item. Any other questions on page ten?
Yes, the 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 supplies and chemicals for weed and pest, a hundred percent increase there, we uh on more of a a vigilant uh attack on leafy spurge or or uh what what what's going on there that?
It trends up and down. So we purchase equipment or we purchase chemical in bulk and we can store it. So if you look back at the trend, we spent, you know, in twenty-three, twenty-four, ten, and then we dropped down to four, then eight, now sixteen. So I think you're just seeing us
Just the push.
Buy it and try to do market values and then get it into storage and use it for a while.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
I had a question also Lance on weed and pest. Um, it looks like we're projecting that we will be getting seventy-eight thousand dollars in collecting those taxes directly. And that there, right now, that means we're supplementing this budget above what we're collecting directly for that. Uh, that's just because of the new assets this year? Or we we generally, it looks like we trend to be uh not supplementing the program above and beyond the taxes we collect. Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're, we made the decision not to have a full-time employee. Uh, it's been hard to get a full-time or a part-time employee who holds the credentials to do this. So Kevin now holds the credentials. But we're still talking about training. You have to have certain licenser to be able to do this. But that's where we've targeted trying to run this program at what we received, which was a percentage eighty-five percent of one mill. We are questioning honestly if we shouldn't be receiving eighty-five percent of two mills. So we've got a question to the county right now. On if we aren't receiving uh the appropriate amount of revenue and for how long and trying to work that out. If we see an increase in the number of mills we have, we'll see uh probably an ask for a full-time employee again because we haven't replaced Kevin yet and then trying to get somebody to stay on top of uh all the new uh, you know, weeds and problems popping up along the river corridors. We've got real problems and, you know, we barely scratch the surface. So it's also, how much can we get done for the budget that we're given every year?
Right. You'll be, we'll be waiting with bated breath to see what the answer is from the county on that because this will be the first summer, I believe, we will have a Parks and Rec director who's also then covering the weed and breast program. It could be overloaded for him, right? It's pretty ambitious, so.
It is, and we need to get him some help. I mean, he's doing a really good job, but don't want to spread him too thin on this. This is a a major job that we need to stay on top of. And uh, you know, the mosquito spraying is, there is some grant going on, but the majority of what we do is for the convenience of the community. So it's also not a necessity. We spray when we have a certain type of mosquito that could give West Nile. Uh, but that's all that's required out of that grant. So we do a lot of convenient spraying uh and then also trying to keep back some of the uh.
Mostly during skating, like it's mostly during skating when they're buying pickles and ice creams and nachos and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, page eleven, any other questions?
I, I just texted Councilmember Cox to let her know we're back on Zoom. Please, you can.
But John, on that item, if you go back to income, I think we had thirty thousand this year.
Ice skating.
For ice skating. So you know, that's the starter to get going, but then
Yeah.
generate those revenues on people buying all those pickles and pickle cycles.
Actually, actually concessions in a separate line item.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah, that's just ice skating.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was quite a bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I did have one question. So now that we.
We don't have a guy who can figure it out.
Oh. Meaning Sean can't figure it out?
Yes. Did somebody text Councilwoman Cox that we're?
I'm in touch with her. He said, she, she suggested we go on and she would catch up, but I know we also want to have the meeting recorded. So I think it's worth it to try to pause and do we get that figured out a little bit?
You can dismiss that, John, if you'd like. Oh, perfect. You have an option to move. You could make that somebody else's job.
Hey. Okay, and we're recording? John, are we recording? Okay.
Are we waiting for Melinda?
She, she said to go ahead and she will catch up, but I I wanted to make sure we were at least recording both for her and the general public before we continued conversation.
Okay, page eleven. Did anyone have any more questions on page eleven? Page twelve.
Uh, so one, Lance is probably more for you. I know we've provided some support in the irrigation system for the golf course. Do we have anything upcoming for the this year? It doesn't look like it, but I know there's still potential.
No, they've told us that they feel like they could run on the help that we've given them in the past. And so this is the standard agreement that we give them for the membership exchange.
Okay, great. We'll hold Scott Peters to that.
Okay, page twelve. Uh, this is where you can see in the new assets in the cemetery budget that they uh have the eighty thousand for the coliverium. Uh, this, you can tell that this future budget to the current budget does not have much change overall. Okay, so going to the enterprise fund, this is where the larger numbers come into play. So you can see that I have the SRF or the DWSRF loan proceeds there of the eleven million eight twenty. That is without any um debt forgiveness in it. Is there any questions on page twelve?
Yes, of course.
Is the state still offering the loan forgiveness?
Yes, we, we will get loan forgiveness with it, but the forgiveness isn't given until you pay everything upfront. And then when it goes into the loan phase, that's when they give you the forgiveness.
Thank you.
So I'm not recognizing forgiveness until they finish a project. Page thirteen, uh, there you can see, this is a sewer, the CWSRF funds being the twelve million, almost thirteen million. The city share that five point seven million will be our match money that we'll need for the Lincoln Street project. And then the other uh SRF ones um that we'll be doing. And then the SLB ARP program is what we have left for the Lincoln Street project. Uh, wages for water and sewer, how we had done those in the past is we had one guy at the lagoon system. We've changed our methodology now, so we take all of the water guys, split them fifty-fifty between water and sewer. And then um between the collection and distribution. So that's why those wages and benefits look a little wonky to past years is because of ha- changing our methodology.
Yeah, and so Shari, you've got a note on uh salary and wages for water that I think is not supposed to be there. You have the fifty thousand added to wages for treffer replacement.
That's, um, there's a few of us here that have the fifty percent of our wages go to enterprise, fifty percent go in general fund. That's where the other fifty thousand for my replacements.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on page thirteen? Page fourteen. So here you can see the cost of these projects. Um, I still have the meter replacement in there. Uh, I believe the contract says they have to be done by June. Uh, I still have some costs in there. You can see what Lincoln Street camp is bid at seven point three, Baldwin Creek five point eight, Buena Vista six, uh McFarland the one point one, but the fifth street being the four, almost fifteen million dollars. So that's why the monies coming from the optional fund are so great is because we're, we pick up fifteen percent of those costs of that. And that's why that budget looks so large is projects based only. Otherwise, it's not a large budget.
Question on the farthing slip there, that five hundred thousand there is, does that include the three hundred uh thousand that we just allocated for the the study?
The three hundred thousand is sitting in in the income, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Any other questions on page fourteen?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so the fifth street project, why is it so much? Is it because the pavement thickness is deeper and and uh that's a main going down fifth, is it?
Yeah, there's actually multiple water mains combining into one. And so you've got two aging water lines that are gonna go into one transmission line. So major utility replacement, we don't get to salvage anything underground. Same thing with the assessment of the sewer and then our pavement investigations, it's all gonna need subbase and then a thicker uh, you know, that fifth street is that connector between Sinks Canyon Road, so it's got a little bit more uh asphalt thickness to it and structure to it that we want to keep that in good shape. So solid engineering, but a lot of this is just um, when we came up with these numbers, we pa- we put back in the bid prices that we recently received. We're hoping that Lincoln Street and maybe some of these projects are a little inflated and that we're planning for that, but we're planning for worst case scenario. Our hope in putting these projects out together, large projects in one big package, is that maybe we'll have uh enough interest in these projects being big or coming to town that people figure out how to do efficient things like bring their asphalt uh plant with them. And, you know, to bid all of this at once or uh subcontract this out, you know, think about it in in bigger, more drawing numbers at one time. So we're gonna bid it this fall in hopes that these aren't actual, but this is plugging in the one-for-one with what we've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Another comment on that, um. Lincoln Street, we say is seven point two million dollars. That is ten blocks of improvements. And Fifth Street, we're going from south to north, so it's a, it's a lot longer project.
Yeah, but I think part of that question that I think is important for all of us to note and and for folks listening in is a couple of years ago when we bid it, it was like six million, thereabouts. Um, I think in low six, so so the same specs applied then, what we're really seeing here is how prices have increased, the impact of tariffs, et cetera, et cetera, happening there.
Right.
So, so when Lance mentioned about the, you know, forty-some million we got for SRF and the hope to do nine or ten projects, this is why we're saying, well, we might do more like four or five projects of our priority list.
But with that, on that note, you can see why we are forecasting a nine percent increase for water and sewers because we're going to have to get, pay more in debt doing these projects if we award them the larger dollars in the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Any other questions on page fourteen? Fifteen, you can just see the biggest changes, just changing our methodology for uh how we're allocating our wages.
Shari, on that, I'm trying to remember if you said it in the beginning, but what's the total um benefit to the city of that? I mean, the methodology change makes sense, but what about total uh money saved?
I'm sorry, what's the total?
For that change methodology, are we saving money and how much?
Um, well, what we're saving, it's probably gonna be a break even.
Okay.
What we're saving is the factor of the human error of. Well, what we're saving, it's probably going to be a break even. What we're saving is the factor of the human error of miscalculating because every time you're going to have to go in and change somebody's hourly rate instead of just letting it happen naturally. And so when you check it for the first time, you're setting them up and you've got them set up correctly. And if each pay period they had on call and you have to go in and manipulate that, the room for human error is much greater.
Thank you.
And also getting rid of it now at this point in time means is we give cost and living or increase wages and negotiate. It's included in their base salary. But you're not seeing that increase in overtime costs, you know, falling into this is the operators see the benefit right now. We've informed them of the decision and it makes sense today, so we don't have to worry about it in future planning.
Okay, yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Page 15. 16 lagoons. Again, you can see we used to just have one employee that was down at the lagoon system and now we're breaking up the wages and rotating guys in and out of there. So 50% of or 25% is hitting this bucket. Accounting and collection is what happens down here at City Hall. And these are shared expenses that gets split between water and sewer. Any other questions on page 16? Page 17. So on page 17, you can see all of the loans that we currently have and the loan payments that we have. I want to point out that the water payment, the 194, that's the 185,000 that actually we're paying $100,000 more than the actual payment because this was the loan that we refinanced of the water treatment plant. And if we kept it at where we were at, we would have been the life of the building would long have outlived and we'd still be paying on a loan. So we have are paying more on those. So these loans get paid off from 2033 to 35. So as these projects get done, those amounts will be less. We could pay them off with reserves or additional monies if we were trying to free up cash. And we are paying one and a half percent interest on those loans where the new loans that we'll be taking on will be at 0.25. And then you can see my future SRF loan payments of the 500,000 in there. Any other questions on page 17?
Where you go.
Maybe maybe some acronym explanation. We have a new council person. So CWSRF is clean water, state revolving fund, DW is drinking water. So when we start talking about those SLIB, state land investment board. Any others that were on your mind as you went through, feel free to grab me after the meeting and we can go over what some of those. Yeah, it'd be good to have a legend for some of this as far as all the acronyms.
Okay, so what would you like to do about the cost of living? Do you want to keep it at three or do you want to give what the what the 4.75, which was the average of last year's entire amount?
I mean, I lean towards the 4.75 to actually match the actual cost that we're seeing because, yeah, we just know that everything's getting more expensive. I don't want to unintentionally punish our employees, right, by not matching that. Where do you think that 56,000 would, where would we find that?
Two things, where two places we could, you know, I am being aggressive on my what I'm taking out for my property taxes. I'm also being conservative on my sales tax. Both of those numbers could be tweaked to come up with the 56. Same with on the water side. I don't think we'd have a hard time finding the 20,000.
And those would still be really conservative giving, I mean, we're decently conservative because you're very conservative now.
If that was your desire, we could at the next May meeting, I could give you the highlight of what number we're changed to accommodate that.
Yeah, it'd be nice. I'd like to see that. I'm in favor of the 4.7, depending where we see.
Also remember when we do do the approve the budget in June, the wage and grade scale will get revised by whatever the cost of living is at that time also. Is everybody for the 4.75 then or?
I'm of like mind for that.
Okay, I'll bring that to you in May and I am finished. And this is my last one.
I hope not. Yeah, thanks.
Unless we don't get your replacement, Shari, and then then it's not your last one. All right. Thank you, Shari, both for all of that. And of course, this took a tremendous amount of work to put together for us. So thank you. Represents many, many hours there. All right, next, Mr. Nichols, come on up. Thanks for being patient while we go through that. She said she she's on another link listening, but she can't get on as a panel member. She she sent a text. I had something happen as a panel, so I'm on the other link listening, so I'm not able to interact, but I can hear great. And I said she can text me with questions.
If I might, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here just to reprise a previous request, if I might. And I want to just thank you for taking taking moment of this evening to allow me to speak. Most of you are, well, all of you except for the new member, council member in the back of the room know who I am, but I'm Tim Nichols and I have the privilege to serve as the director of Wind River Transportation Authority and the Fremont County Association of Governments. Today, I'm not so much here to talk about buses and where they go. But I'm here to talk about people and about mobility. The economic and human consequences if we lose this system. This, this is quite more than just a funding request and if I might, like much of what comes out of my mouth, it's a call up call to action to the public as well. And without any immediate action, our community faces a catastrophic loss of mobility. Nationally, we've already seen proposals to cut 74 bus routes, 50 rail stations, over 3,000 jobs, which leave more than half a million stranded passengers. But here in Fremont County, this threat is real as well. WRTA will be on the brink of losing over 1 million in federal funding assistance unless we secure the local match to support that. Public transportation was never designed as to turn a profit, as I've said many times before. Like roads in schools, it is at the national level referred to as infrastructure. For every dollar invested in public transit, we see four turn in in four dollars returned into the economy. Let's not mistake efficiency for expendability. Since 1989, WRTA has been a bridge to opportunity. We connect 10 cities, towns, unincorporated communities throughout Fremont County and the Wind River Reservation. Over 36,000 riders and demand continues to grow. We're more than just a transit service. We are a 36 year thread of continuity to this community. Lander is a critical hub within this system and infrastructure of the framework of our of WRTA. All four fixed routes serve W or serve Lander. Safe ride keeps people safe on nights and weekends. Share a ride, which is soon to transition into WRTA on demand, brings curb to curb access to residents who need it most. At the current ridership, we have 41% of safe ride users coming from Lander. That's quickly climbing. And if Riverton doesn't step up, we'll be overtaken by Lander's ridership. I see, I see some representing. No, in all good fun. With Lander's regional institutions, medical centers, schools, the ripple effect of transit reaches far beyond just the city limits of Lander. Our request to Lander is part of a broader effort to meet our 500,000 and $92 operating local match requirement for FY26. That's the key to unlocking over $1 million in federal assistance. If we miss that match, those dollars do not wait for Fremont County to make up that match. They are reassigned and reallocated to other states and to other counties who are ready to step up to meet that local match. This ask is based on service usage, population and real community reliance. It's not a favor. It's an investment that reflects your impact as a community. Certainly.
I was just curious on that 500,000 and a half million that you're looking for local operating match. With the the county, Riverton, Lander, can you tell us approximately what, you know, what our share would be that or?
Absolutely, I can. And attached to some of your materials should be that metric.
Okay.
That breaks it down just specifically so you can see the exact population. Actually, I have that here, but it should be included in your materials, probably the last. If not, I'll send it along, but it shows exactly Lander's.
Yeah.
Perfect. So it should be in your materials and absolutely breaks down the cost.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely. So we have to evaluate the cost of the loss of any potential transit reductions. We often ask what transit costs, but we have to ask what it saves as well. Transit access reduces unemployment spending by 18%. Increases rider or it increases rider income nationally by 1.4 billion per year. Cuts emerging cuts emergency room visits by 12%, which save 9 million annually in Medicaid costs. 40% of students and 33% of low income households rely on transit to break cycles of poverty. This is referred to as a social equalization, an engine of opportunity and not a cost center. So then we have to ask ourselves, what is what happens if we don't ask? So the practical or the reality of the situation is we would forfeit portion or all of our $1 million in federal support. Riders would lose access to schools, dialysis, jobs and groceries. And our local economy suffers from the loss of customer flow and increased demand on social services. Nationally, transit underfunding is projected to cost about $340 billion in lost business sales over a decade. Close closer to home, every route that is reduced increases isolation, especially for seniors and those with disabilities. Public transit, once again, I'll refer to as infrastructure. We don't expect our police departments or highways to turn a profit or generate their own revenue. Why should WRTA? 40% of transits, 40% of transit's value comes not from its fares and its collection, but from the reduced public assistance cost and increased workforce productivity. This is the silent engine of a social and economic system. Mobility is a precondition of all of the rights. And if we dismantle that, we dismantle access. So that is dark as it might seem, there's positives working behind the scenes at WRTA as well. And we're doing anything but standing still. We're not waiting for rescue nor handout. What we have done is we're building the future of public transportation in Fremont County. We've submitted a USDA grant to study the long term sustainability of a sustainable funding model with reviews underway. Transit software improvements are being developed for 2025, allowing better scheduling and route management to reduce the overhead costs. We're planning facility and fleet reinvestments to reduce operational costs long term in WRTA's leading regional transportation planning. Bringing together other providers to streamline services, expand access and reduce duplication. But these efforts take time and without any local support now, how long term solutions may not arrive soon enough to save the service residents deeply depend on. So when I when I first started WRTA, one year and maybe seven or eight months ago now, one of the first things that we learned or we heard, one of the first things I heard from our partner agencies and honestly from our own staff was the system felt fragmented in a way. Each provider was doing their best, but we were duplicating services to be blunt. Fighting for the same shrinking pool of resources and struggling to modernize with what we had. So we started asking different questions. What if we stopped acting like separate silos and started operating like a region? What if we pooled our resources, built shared infrastructure, aligned our tools? Not just to survive, but so we can begin to thrive. That's the path we've been building for the past year. It's not theory, it's theoretical. It's it is happening right now. We're currently or we are creating regional maintenance programs so smaller providers or other agencies don't have to choose between safety and affordability. We're bringing dispatch and scheduling into one place. Because if we had, if we can serve a rider in DuBois or Fort Collins faster and more efficiently, we absolutely should do so. And we're negotiating fuel and equipment as one entity because no one should be paying more just because they're small. It's not glamorous work, but it's foundational. And it's how we build a transit system that doesn't just respond to needs, but it anticipates it. So at the heart of all this work and as dark as I might get at times, there are people far beyond the spreadsheets and the service map, real people. A woman in Lander boards the bus three times a week to get to dialysis. She's on a fixed income and WRTA is the only way she can get there. Without us, she's forced to choose between paying someone to drive her or skipping treatment entirely. Another rider uses Safe Ride to get home safely after late night shifts. She said, there is no, no one else I could call. Imagine that working to support yourself only be left without safe way home. Another man told us that without WRTA, I would have lost my job. That story repeats itself across across the region and across Fremont County. Folks don't, folks don't have cars who can't afford gas or who are just trying to get to class, to work or to the doctor utilize WRTA. So what's the ask? Put plainly, 60,449. That's the ask. The amount that'll help us keep every route running within Lander. It keeps Safe Ride operating, share ride servicing. But most importantly, it secures our federal funding and the services that depend on it for a single fiscal year. And that's taking into account if all other agencies contribute their allocated portion as well. So going beyond the minimum ask if entertained could help WRTA remain stable. I want to emphasize the the importance of stability in the current funding environment and ecosystem that we currently exist in. While also drawing to attention that with this cost allocation plan, we cannot really rely on the county supplying their portion. I have high hopes that Riverton may contribute. So I would like to turn to Lander to set the tone of leadership here that could change the conversation moving forward. The choices today or within the near future will really set the tone of what the future of WRTA looks like. An investment would protect lives. It would unlock economic opportunity and would reaffirm that Lander supports the people who rely on public transportation every day as an infrastructure and not a social service. So I'll step off of the the podium with my prepared remarks in. So I'll step off of the podium with my prepared remarks and venture into the much, much more uncertain, uncertain area where I feel uncomfortable not having anything prepared, but I do want to thank you for your time and consideration. And emphasize once again that, that public transportation is not just a budget line item. It's a lifeline for thousands of people who depend on it. And our choice isn't between transit and savings. It's between investing now or paying a lot more later. So I would love to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. I'm sure you're gonna have some. I've seen folks grab for the microphone. I'm, I'm gonna call first, though, to say first, thank you for the presentation. And agreed, I, I know of multiple business owners, you know, you write it, people would lose their jobs without this, but the inverse is also true. There's a number of folks that I've spoken to that without WRTA providing service, they wouldn't be able to get their employees to work. And so that, that's definitely important. And certainly, when you talk about partnerships, I want to put a finer point on that. You're specifically talking about senior center transportation and how important that is to our seniors around town. You know, here in Lander, they do, on average, 60-plus rides every day, Monday through Friday. You know, I see them all over, they're taking folks up to, you know, therapy appointments, doctor appointments and whatnot. So, and, and I know you and I have spoken one-on-one about that, and that's part of what Mr. Nichols is trying to do is they likewise need federal funding, and he's trying to help them accurately track and, you know, follow all the rules and regulations. He's, he's been here before, those enormous books. That applies to everybody, and that's not what's in the bailiwick of a lot of our senior center directors as well. So I appreciate you helping them follow, you know, dot all the i's and cross the t's on their requirements as well. So, okay, with that, I'll turn it over. Councilmember Larson saw your light on.
That's just because I leave it on.
Okay.
But anyway, I, I do have a question. So the, the $60,449, that, that's an annual?
Yeah, at the current local match request, that is correct. That, so this is also evaluating our, our, the resources at our disposal. There is a high probability that year-over-year, the ask might increase as our ability to generate revenue further diminishes. FTA regulations are constantly changing. Wyoming is still behind the curve in catching up as far as compliance requirements. So it seems like every year, there's new certifications that prevent us from providing chartered services or, you know, somehow generating revenue in other manner. So that, that is based off of a 50% commitment from WRTA to make our local match, operating local match this next fiscal year. So that indeed could change year-over-year.
So what, what's the county's, what, what's their thoughts for, for not funding this? You said that there wasn't a whole lot of
I will tell you.
Support there.
I'm gonna, I'm probably gonna poke around in some fashion.
I know they're really concerned about the ambulance.
Are you asking what the request is or why they might be hesitant to?
I'm, I'm asking why, why they're reticent to, to support this. You know, I, I looked at that $100,000 basically just around things, ma- make it easy. And, you know, if that's split between Lander and Riverton.
Yeah. So I can specifically answer that now. I apologize. I should have brought my laptop up here, but the county's ask would total 98,343.
Right. But what, you, you said that they were reticent about funding this. You didn't figure that they were gonna pony up anything on this, is that correct? Or did I misunderstand that?
You did not misunderstand that. Without speaking for the county, I do not, I won't, I won't at this time feel confident about that request being fulfilled.
Thank you, Mayor. I share that wariness about the county funding this as well, and, and we'd be deeply disappointed if they didn't. So I have some questions about planning for that worst-case scenario. You're asking us for 60,449 on an annual basis. I think for this fiscal year, knowing that we have the unallocated funds collected from the half-cent economic development tax, I'm 100% comfortable with that request for this year and counsel that we would grant that out of those unallocated funds. But I, I do want to look at, what do you, what's your plan B if the county comes back with zero? Do you come back to us? Are there other options?
At the, Mayor, council, the, the options are quickly being exhausted. I, I will try not to reduce myself to the level of begging, but it might at that stage, right? You, you might see me on street corners with a, with a, with a little tin can. There are many of my colleagues across the nation right now that, that are in the very similar situations, trying to figure out how to meet their local match and putting professional beggar on the back of their business card. So it, it, yeah, we have every professional we have access to with their hands in the agency right now. Community Transportation Association of America is, is working on their current study for service redesign options and possible alternative funding options. If the USDA grant is approved, we'll roll directly into a year-long funding study where hopefully it'll be one of the very first rural transit sustainable funding models that's, that's developed. So we'll be kind of the guinea pig to roll that out. We're, we're really exhausting every option of what we have at our disposal.
Mayor, can I follow up?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols, the way I'm approaching this, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that we're considering a fiscal year 26 request right now. You'll come back at fiscal, fiscal year 27, it might increase. I'd like us to hope that sort of work towards, I should say, that by fiscal year 27, we've secured a dedicated funding stream with the consent of the voting public and that we found something that's palatable to our taxpayers to pay for this infrastructure. And so I'm sequestering this decision, I think, to fiscal year 26, fiscal year 27. And then there's a, a sort of hope for an optimistic solution there. We might have to come back for another solution after that. Are you thinking along those same kind of categorizations, I guess, or compartmentalization is a better word?
Kicking over trash cans here, I'm so sorry. So if, I'm gonna elaborate on that just a little bit if I might. So yes, there's a couple opportunities in front of us, and there's, there's a lot of consultants with their hands in the pot, like I mentioned right now, that'll look at options. Regional Transportation Authority District, there's potential sales tax options as well that could potentially fund. But also, as we've learned in the last election, we cannot put an over-dependence on a renewable sales tax. So there's another avenue that we're, we're working with philanthropy experts. I can't remember where they're headquartered out of. If I could dream 10 to 15 years ahead of time, it would be with the establishment of a $20 million endowment. Now, that seems like a joke to many rural, you know, $20 million is a lot of money, but it's also permanent funding. That's, that, that results in no public transit agency within Fremont County ever coming back to a local government for subsidy. That generates enough on, on interest alone that would meet local match now. So we're gonna be working with a lot of stakeholders and individuals to try and generate at least the initial corpus of that funding. But long-term might look, it might look like there's a district. There might look like there's at least initiative for the sales tax option, a pool of funds that's then endowed. I mean, it could, it could look a lot of different, different ways.
Mayor, if I may, of course, I'm planning on being my last comment, we'll find out. Shari, correct me, I'm planning on about $900,000 in our half-cent collections. Our total half-cent collection.
About 900,000. I want to point out one thing about Timmy. So they asked me to sit on the finance director, the finance committee for WRTA. So myself, the mayor of Dubois, and the mayor of Hudson met with him and went over his budget line item by line item yesterday. This is the most frugal budget. I mean, when I asked what the wage increase was for the year, it was $8,000. I mean, they are running this operation lean and mean. They have aging buses that caught, that are gas hogs, that are really utilizing their repair budget. So they're trying to also replace buses to accommodate, to make that saving. So when you, and their base salary for drivers was $36,000. And I said, "How are you even finding anyone at that salary level?" So when you talk about frugal means, this operation has been being run on very frugal means.
Thank you. Lance? Sorry.
I guess, go ahead. I might have a question after.
Okay. I'm debating that you have information that might help what I'm about to say, but I'll forge ahead then. So if we have council of roughly $900,000 of unallocated half-cent economic development tax collections, I think that's what we're considering tonight for both of these requests. Honestly, maybe we haven't clearly budgeted out of our general fund, nor should we at this point, I don't think. So I'm comfortable with the $64,000 request that you've come to tonight coming out of that collection. And honestly, depending on how it goes with the county, I would make that, my preference, my opinion would be that's provisional, like 64,000 is the baseline. If, if it goes south of the county, I would entertain coming back and looking at up to 100K from our half-cent allocations if there's no other, you know, options. It's, it would be above and beyond that Lander's proportion. We'd be covering a lot of other riders and supporting economic development across the county then. And I hesitate with that, that's not necessarily our role. But if the whole system is gonna crash because of that lack of support, then I would take that seriously as well, knowing that you're being frugal, knowing that you're looking under every rock, and that we need to find some provisional solutions for a couple of years and then identify that, that long-term dedicated funding stream as well. And I'll just say lastly, Mr. Nichols, I appreciate your heartfelt and very data-driven approach when you come to present to us. So thank you for combining. Thank you for combining both really great data and a very compelling case. Thank you.
We're, we're gonna have Councilman Hahn and then you, Lance.
My question is, so, so obviously you're asking everybody for money. If you just get part of the money you're asking for, then you are going to, what, tailor-fit your operation to run on the monies you have? Is that the way you'll do your shrink?
If that is, well, yeah, so there, I'll lean to the, the chart, kind of got a look at the variables in our revenue right now. And I, I'd hesitate to say there've ever been that many questionable items. So to answer your question directly, if all of that, and all of our resources are exhausted, it would be inevitable, we would have to reduce the size of the operation to meet whatever federal funds we're able to leverage out, right? So it would reduce a lot by a lot, the amount. So our, our operating funds are matched at a 46%, or 44%, I apologize. And that's a 56% federal, federal share. So it, you know, almost 50/50 means every dollar almost takes out another dollar. And so when we touch operating funds, it significantly decreases service providing across the county. On our administrative side and our maintenance side, it's an 80/20, so 80% federal share, 20% local share. We, we did kind of immediately transition some of our operations, which were not all received very well by the public, but we did it with kind of cost-effectiveness in mind. When we dropped the Walmart leg, it, it increased the efficiency of the system quite a bit, where we were able to drop off about $60,000 of our operating and reallocate some of those funds to our maintenance and administration. We did that because it lessened our local match obligations significantly when we put it into those while retaining our federal share. So we were able to secure those funds temporarily while, while lessening our local match obligation.
And your federal funds are solid?
Yeah, so they are a form, yeah, that's excellent question. So with CTAA being in such close proximity to WRTA, we kind of have a, a sideline view into what's going on in the FDA right now. And you have formula programs for rural transportation is tentatively secure. So yes, yeah, we should be.
Thank you.
Okay. Lance?
I'm sure you've thought about all your options, but I guess just had a couple of questions as I'm thinking about it. With this being a federal award, the governor set apart an amount of money for his discretionary funds to meet federal matches. Have you guys made a request into the governor's discretionary funds? And then also have you applied for MRG? Because it seems like you meet all that criteria for mineral royalty grant as well, especially if you're a joint powers board or something that's within those. But that could be state help rather than local help to meet the federal awards, but didn't know if you've looked there.
Yes, so short answer is yes, we have. And the way we prioritize the funding is we reached out to the state grants office. I don't know if I should turn this way or that way. But we've reached out to the state grants office. We did that about, oh, seven months ago, and we received an opportunity scan. And in you, we identified all the potential sources of revenue, both federal grant, state grant, local match eligibility, all of that. I've not heard the MRG yet, so I'll, I'll look into that. It didn't come up on our opportunity scan. However, the Y-GAP funding, we might qualify for. The state grants office is looking into that as well. So there's a combination that we can go, when we get into, you know, hopefully we can stive off the desperation to at least another fiscal year. But when, when times get incredibly difficult, our, another opportunity we have in front of us is we can apply for Y-GAP funding for our operating assistance, since it is technically a portion of these rural transportation federal formula grants is derived from, I don't remember what it stands for, but it's the IIJA now, but it used to be the bipartisan infrastructure bill. The other section comes from the general fund, right? So there, there's not necessarily program, programmatic funding outside of that. So it does meet the qualifications for Y-GAP funding for operating assistance. In addition to that, there's something called the SLIB Transportation Enterprise Fund, which primarily has, has been allocated for capital assistance. Everything we're requesting right now is just operating assistance-based. If we can secure the operation itself, we can hopefully work in year-over-year some additional local match assistance for our capital, because as, as Shari attested to, it's an incredibly aged fleet. And so we've got a couple other options at our disposal as well. Before we get to that stage where we request assistance from those programs, we would like to demonstrate that we've at least gone within the communities. We've, you know, we've asked for local government subsidy, we've also turned over every rock. So that way, when we make, with the assistance of the state grants office, when we make our request, we have, we can truly attest that we have turned over every single rock we could possibly do. Well, this is your question.
Yeah.
Okay. I will look into the MRG. I, that's new to me.
So one, one thing I want to note, I want to pick up on some of that Councilmember Stubble said about this is, absolutely has a role in economic development. And while I know it's making for a long meeting tonight, I mean, I'd like to point out, we just went through 16 pages of our budget, most of which does not generate revenue, or it, it doesn't cover its cost, right? So, you know, we're never gonna make back all that we spent on recreation infrastructure, on police department, on these other things. We just went through 16 pages of that. So one of the things I mentioned in strategic planning, and I want to reiterate here, is that I hope we pay attention to ways that we can serve to drive economic development as a council and getting people to jobs and having people in jobs is one of those ways that we can help our economy keep, keep going, if not growing. And it also ties into the challenge of our housing, that more and more of our workers, especially lower-end workers, cannot afford to live in Lander. So they're depending on public transportation to get here. So I think there's a very compelling case in my mind that it does fit in economic development, and it's one of the ways that we can help keep our economy going. So thank you for your presentation. And Captain Watt wants to make a comment.
I'd be amiss if I didn't say something because of my current role. But I think, if you're not aware, Mr. Nichols and WRTA is a very huge part of the DUI team. They come to the governor's council meeting, they supply Safe Rides to all the major events. As we've used him, those rides have increased enormously. As we've used him, those rides have increased enormously in the reduction of all of our impaired driving. On the other sense, with crime in our community, Lander is is the county seat. The jail's here, people get brought to jail here, they don't get returned home, they get kicked out here. His bus, we've put a bus stop in over by the jail that you're aware of. He's provided rides to these people back to the communities where they came from, so they don't stay here. So I think those are important points as as we talk about this for him.
You know, I'm just trying to to be realistic here. If the county backs completely off of this, like I say, I know, I know that they're really concerned about ambulance right now. And and using the same percentages, you know, that Landon River didn't have to the to the county is about 43% split on that, but Lander would be looking at 102,779, Riverton would be up to 142,821. But I I know that we've still got the the air service that we're looking at trying to to save out of this half cent sales stuff. Is the money there?
To to be determined. And that's actually you're you're making the case for a good segue into Mr. Butterfield's approach for that. Yeah. And I think one of the questions all of us have is what are residual funds in the half cent economic development for the county? And I don't have an answer for that. But I my own opinion is I think they would be flirting with danger if they started redirecting that to general fund and covering other expenses. That was not what the taxpayers voted for.
Well, I'm just looking at to be realistic, you know, that we're we're looking at $103,000 to put into to WRTA. If if the county completely backs away and and that's providing that Riverton puts up their 140, 143,000 in order to to keep WRTA whole. You know, I I'm all for it if we can afford it.
Yeah, agreed. I think what comes next is obviously giving this some thought and potentially at our May 13 business meeting, getting a better sense with Shari about what our numbers are and being able to to make that budget amendment of our residual lift funds and how how well we can best use that. A phrase I've used before is how do we do the greatest good for the greatest number of people with our our limited funds? And to me, that's that's definitely applies in this instance for it. So any other question for Mr. Nichols? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Butterfield, will have you come up?
Thank you.
Okay, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mayor White and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and provide some additional information on commercial air service in Fremont County. I've always appreciated coming and talking to your body, and I appreciate the support through the many years that we've had together. I'd also like to take an opportunity, if it's okay, to thank the police department and interim chief Wa for the the help that we received last week in our community. It's really heartening to me to see the way Fremont County organizations band together. And we had an opportunity to respond to an incident where public safety could have been threatened. And with the coordination of our trained law enforcement professionals, it turned out the way it should have. And I want to express my gratitude for that partnership.
Yeah.
With that said, what we'd like to do is just run through briefly a few information points as it relates to commercial air service in Fremont County. And then ultimately get to, I think, the question of the day, and that is, what does the funding projection look like for the retention of commercial air service in Fremont County? I'd like to first make note and remind those that are watching and you as a governing body that first and foremost, commercial air service is an investment into our local economy, and it is a revenue generator. These figures come from an economic impact study performed by the state of Wyoming in 2020. So the the figures are somewhat dated at this point. The state is performing a new economic impact analysis, but it's not yet published. Based on the information that we received in 2020, as they specifically looked at commercial air service in the state of Wyoming and the air service enhancement program, you'll see that for Central Wyoming Regional Airport, the return on investment for dollars put towards the minimum revenue guarantee was at $3 in 19. It's interesting to note that that was put together at a time when our annual passenger employments or those departing the airport were significantly lower than what they are today. If you look at the trend there, the average for 17, 18, and 19 was roughly 7,500. But I'd like to point out that that 7,500 brought in that 25 million dollar stimulus in economic activity as shown on the previous slide. And that was with about a third of the passengers that we saw in 2024. Another way to look at this is the impact that we have for visitors in Fremont County because of commercial air service. You'll notice that from this 2020 study, 57% of the employments recorded at the airport were tied to those that were visiting and those dollars that they were spending in our community. To project that, and this is conservative projections, but just to try and throw forward what it would look like today at that 57% or even being more conservative at 50% at roughly 21,000 employments instead of the 7,500. You're seeing significantly more commercial visitor expenditures. Now, this is a simple projection. I look forward to receiving a more detailed analysis from the state of Wyoming when they renew their economic impact study. For several years, the Fremont Air Service team has referenced back to a Headwaters Economics article that was published. It was titled Three Wests: Access to Markets Effect Performance. What they're talking about is economic development performance. This article identified in the West, there are three categorized communities as it related to this study. Metropolitan, connected, and isolated. And you'll notice that the isolated definition there at the bottom looks somewhat familiar to what we enjoy here in Fremont County. We like our rural lifestyle, counties in a rural setting, but are isolated, whereas difficult to get to major populated to mean population centers via road or air travel. We all know what it looks like when you try and get on an interstate in Fremont County. You have to travel to actually get to the interstate. Fortunately, while we enjoy a rural lifestyle here in Fremont County, we resemble a little bit more the connected type of community. And you'll notice just briefly where it says connected counties, though those in rural settings, but with airports connecting them to larger markets tend to perform more like metro areas. I think that's an important reminder that having a commercial air service airport in our county provides that important connectivity to the national transportation network and other markets, which fosters and promotes and supports business. I like showing this slide because many of you have seen this. I don't know, Ray Jean, you've seen this a lot, haven't you? Through the years, and I'm sure you very well remember in 2014, what it looked like in 2015, where Denver Air Connection began in 2016, we were really at a low where as a community, we had to fight to keep our connectivity that is so important for commercial air service. And you'll see the Great Lakes decline there. Fortunately, we have a good partner currently with SkyWest Airlines. You'll notice an immediate increase in usage at the airport. COVID-19 happened, that's the all time low. But I'm quick to point out that after COVID-19, our community and really Wyoming in general responded very quickly in returning to travel and supporting commercial air service and airports. And we are seeing record levels of passenger employments, well over 2,000 a month currently. Here's a different look at our performance. You'll notice the red line is year to date, at least through March. And the trend line is significantly better than what we had in 21, 22, 23, or 24. I would like to highlight where you noticed the acceleration point around May in the 2024 line correlates directly to the return of two daily round trip flights. The market was needing more connectivity, and once it was provided with the right capacity and schedule, forgive the pun, things really took off. Briefly, want to talk about the mechanics of air service, specifically in our county. As a reminder, we participate in the capacity purchase program. This was established by the Wyoming Legislature. It's managed by Y dot Aeronautics. And ultimately, there are four airports that participate in this program, Sheridan, Rock Springs, Gillette, and Fremont County. There's a potential with this program to go for 10 years, and we are just about to complete the sixth year of that contract. There's a renewal option to go into the remaining four years that the state of Wyoming is currently negotiating with SkyWest Airlines. As a reminder, the state of Wyoming invests in the capacity purchase program to the tune of 60% of the costs related to the minimum revenue guarantee. And as communities were asked to belly up and cover the 40%. As we look at the way that the contract is put together for the capacity purchase agreement, several variables play into that. It is an annual contract that's reviewed and refreshed. And we, as a local community, have opportunity to opt into that contract via a memorandum of understanding. That contract establishes a budget that projects forward what the minimum revenue guarantee would be. However, the minimum revenue guarantee is invoiced on actuals. So we project forward a budget to know what we're getting into, but we are invoiced on actuals. To look more specifically, there are what I would say, three significant variables that go into the calculation of the minimum revenue guarantee in order to participate in the capacity purchase contract. First is what we delineate as dry costs. That's basically the cost to operate the aircraft without fuel. It's a rate that's broken into an hourly rate called the block hour that covers crew costs, maintenance costs, insurance, airframe, airport fees, et cetera. In addition to the dry cost is the fuel cost. We project that each year with a consultant and with SkyWest and the state of Wyoming. But actual fuel prices are charged. So whatever the market is at the time of the flight is what is assessed. Finally, the third variable is the revenue variable. The first to address expenses, the third is revenue. This is as simple as knowing how many people are on the plane and how much they're paying for the ticket. And we do receive revenue that's generated between Riverton or Central Wyoming Regional Airport and Denver. That's direct revenue to our program. But many of our travelers travel beyond Denver. And there is a prorated amount of revenue that we receive for our project for those flights that travel beyond Denver. And a lot of it is based on the miles as it relates to the travel or the trip. Another way to look at it is, again, you take the costs, so dry costs, fuel costs. You subtract out the revenue, and again, that's the ticket price and the load factor combined together. And that generates the revenue guarantee or the component that we are required to participate in as a community and as a state. Another way to look at it is you have your total cost. You have the revenue that's generated by the route on its own, and the difference is that revenue guarantee. We kind of went through this, but dry costs again, address everything that goes into the cost of operating an aircraft. Fuel is actual and it is paid or related to the time of the flight. Ticket pricing, I went through that a little bit, and it fluctuates based on how full the plane is, how far in advance the tickets are sold, and several other variables. The load factor against how many people are on the plane, that can be impacted seasonally with the density of the air on very hot days. We do have some restrictions on our aircraft to ensure there's a safe operation. But also there is a seasonality in travel, and you kind of saw that in that line graph we went through earlier. Ultimately, there is some fluctuation between how much revenue is generated organically or on its own and then how much is required for the minimum revenue guarantee because it is based on actuals. The optional half percent was a wonderful solution when it came to securing commercial air service for our community and covering the requirement of the minimum revenue guarantee. I want to point out just briefly, as you see the contract budget and the local share of that, which is getting us 40% where we sat at fiscal year 20 and through the first three year contract period. And now as we're working through the second three year contract period, you'll notice that we were originally looking at 600 to 700,000 in our local match due to market condition changes, inflation, and new contract prices with pilot pilots. The cost for commercial air service increased. This is important to point out because when the optional half percent tax was passed, 20%, as you know, was to be dedicated and allocated directly for air service. That 20% generates roughly $800,000. It does not cover currently the 1.6 that we have in fiscal year 25. Here's another way to look at it in that you'll see the block hour changes or the rate that's applied to each flight from the first contract period and to where we are today. You'll notice it's at 43, 43 versus the 23, 73 when the project started. As it relates to how we're invoiced and how we manage this project, I thought it would be important to show a side by side comparison just from the performance of the month of March. You'll notice in the middle column, it's the projected budget. This is what was prepared at the time of us entering into the memorandum of understanding roughly a year ago. You'll see that the total cost that was projected was for the month, $843,544 with an offset of revenue of $503,750. Projecting a budgeted MRG or minimum revenue guarantee of $339,794. To look at the actuals of what we are going to be paying for the month of March, you'll see that expenses were pretty close to the projection, $805,457. And you'll see the the swing there was the fuel. Fuel ended up being less expensive than what we were thinking it would be about a year ago. The dry cost was roughly exact. The revenue, you'll notice the load factor performed better than the 65% that we projected. However, the average fare was not as high as we were hoping, therefore generating about $411,000. We did receive a little bit of a credit for delays for the month of March, but you'll notice that the required minimum revenue guarantee that will be invoiced is $381,783. And again, we take 40% of that, not the full amount. Having gone through the mechanics of commercial air service in Fremont County and also a reminder of the investment towards our community and its economic impact, I think we're getting to the question of the day without the optional half percent. I think we're getting to the question of the day without the optional half percent. And as we've responded to that defeat, we need to project the runway that we have to maintain commercial air service in Fremont County. I tried to do that in a way that was easy to digest and I included color. So how about that? You'll notice that the the bar line at the top represents the fiscal years moving forward. And also you'll see as the funds deplete from green to red. I want to communicate the current cash position that we have for commercial air service. We do have a positive fund balance or a reserve in place. That's because we were able to save monies from the optional half percent tax as it related to having fewer round trip flights for some of the period. You'll remember we were only with one round trip flight for a while and now have the two round trip flights that allowed us to have a bit of a fund balance. As of basically last week, we were sitting at two million, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. There is one more quarterly payment that we need to make for the minimum revenue guarantee before the end of this fiscal year, which again is June thirty. That's projected to be four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. You'll notice that that's being subtracted off of that cash position. We do anticipate another one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to be received from that twenty percent that is dedicated towards commercial air service from the optional half percent tax. The tax stopped being collected in March and it will stop being remitted to municipalities in May. I also want to point out that the city of Riverton agreed to allocate all of its remaining seventy percent discretionary monies associated with the economic development tax towards air service outside of ten thousand dollars that it gave towards the Mercy House investment in Riverton. So all of the unobligated funds for that seventy percent from the city of Riverton are going to go towards commercial air service moving forward. We also have these funds invested into an account and we project receiving about twenty-one thousand in interest through the end of the fiscal year. I wanted to walk through just so you knew exactly where we sat from a cash position. We anticipate having two point one million and change at the end of this fiscal year, June thirty. That's important because as we start the new fiscal year, we project the minimum revenue guarantee payment for fiscal year twenty-six, so running from July of twenty-five to June of twenty-six of one million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Fortunately, because of the positive cash position that we have, we can fly with confidence. We can let our friends know that they don't have to be worried when they book their flight if the plane will actually show up. It will show up. People can continue to connect out of Fremont County through the upcoming fiscal year. If things go as projected with the current cash position that we have, we will close fiscal year twenty-six with a positive fund balance of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Well, yes, if I get the question before we get too far down the road from where you're at. The the four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars that you've got payment remaining for the the last quarter here. Now, is that just the our forty percent or is that everything? The sixty percent of the state, forty percent of?
Mayor White, Councilman, yes, that's just our forty percent. So with that, kind of going back up to the graphic at the top of the slide, you'll notice that we project to exhaust the current funds we have in September of twenty-six. We are looking at alternative revenue options and funding sources, one of which could be another ballot initiative to support commercial air service. The earliest that that ballot initiative could come forward unless we do a special election would be at the interim election period or the midterm that could run at as early as August, September, if it's on primary or in November, if it's on the general. And I'm also projecting when receipt of that initiative could be received if it's similar to how the optional half percent tax was performed. So if a ballot initiative was brought forward and if it passes, the communities could anticipate receiving revenue from that around April or May of twenty-seven. You'll notice in order to get to that point, it's projected that we would be short between a million and one point five million dollars. That's where we sit currently for commercial air service. I remain optimistic. I'm so proud of our community and the way that we have supported the airport. Clearly, there's a market, our community is using it. And I appreciate the hard work that everyone is putting towards keeping our county connected through commercial air service. And at that, Mayor, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Councilman Hahn?
Yes, I definitely would not would not want to live without an airport. My question is, I mean, we're, we're, this is, we're we're going up, we're going up a hundred thousand plus a a year. My question is, on the local budget side, is there a, do you see a failure point in the future? I mean, how many years? I mean, just your point of view. Do you understand the question? I mean, a, a, a breaking point on the on the budget where where if it keeps on going up and up and up at the same angle that we're going, you know, coming up with the funds or is that something you don't, you don't want to?
Mayor Wyatt, Councilman, I appreciate the question because there may come a point, an inflection point where we have to make a decision. I like to fall back on the statement that we fly until we run out of money. And we stay connected until we do. And I appreciate that there are several smart people working to ensure that we can meet that commitment. A few things that we could look at if the cost for commercial air service outpaces our ability to pay it is exploring alternative air carriers, working with other communities as far as combining routes. I think anything would be on the table if the cost for air service with our current partner exceeded our ability to generate revenue.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Butterfield? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Butterfield, thank you also for such a data-driven presentation as always. Do you, how would the operations change in terms of being able to cut costs there too? I mean, it's so complicated. If we went down to one flight, we only just got to the two. I hate to say it, but there's a real decrease in service there. Have you run those scenarios out too? Does that give you much of a longer runway?
Mayor Wyatt, Councilwoman, I have not run those scenarios, so I don't want to project anything, but that could be another strategy is reducing the frequency of flights, but I couldn't speak to the impact it would have on our ability to fund going forward.
And if I may follow up, the question of the hour, of course, you are going to the county. Have you, do you have plans for when you go to the county for this?
Mayor Wyatt, Councilwoman, we do need to go speak with the county. A member of our FAST team has been in touch with the commissioner and we hope to get on their agenda in the near, in the near future.
And right now, those are the main sources of funding that you're looking for. Is there a quest to us from our unspent allocation and perhaps the county?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman, that's correct. We currently are requesting funds from your unobligated seventy percent portion generated by the half percent tax and we'll do the same with the county.
I would add this partly putting on my my Fast Chat and also looking at this, but also want to note that we're assuming that revenues and expenses stay relatively comparable comparable to what we have. And like, we can't control the price of aviation fuel. You know, we can't can't control when folks buy plane tickets and if they're only going to Denver or continue to, you know, the East Coast or overseas. So the further someone flies, the less of their ticket prices is allocated back to us. And those are all factors we can't control. We can be reasonably confident that we have good track record of how many folks are flying and and how it generally breaks, but there are no certainties in that. But we wish we could, especially the guy in the green shirt back there. He would love that. Other questions? Correct. Yeah, this would be our residual half cent economic development. So again, I think it depends a bit on what the, to what extent the county is willing to support these two endeavors. So that that drives part of it. According to the math you did earlier, if we had to allocate a hundred and thirty thousand because the county wasn't supporting, that would leave seven hundred and seventy thousand available to put towards air service. But again, there's a pretty big factor for us in not knowing to what extent the county will provide support for these two.
Right, right.
So it is, you know, as I look at this, if if we were able to support at the, at our higher dollar, well, assuming the county did not support and we had seven hundred and seventy, that would certainly help get us comfortably through fiscal year twenty-six and into twenty twenty-seven, but that would not cover the entirety of fiscal twenty-seven.
And you'd be hoping on passage of a sales tax or some other form of revenue at that that time to come in.
Exactly.
And cover the cost.
Right. Or that, or that is another option or reducing the frequency of flights or trying to tag as we did early on with another entity. We had a few tag flights, sometimes with Sheridan, sometimes we, did we ever tag with Rock Springs? I think we did. Yeah. The air companies do not like that because one of their maintenance, their maintenance things are really based on takeoffs and landing. So by adding an additional takeoff and landing, it increases the frequency of their repairs and maintenance. And then also the most fuel is used at both takeoff and landing so that it's disproportionate. So as an aside, the block hour rate for Cheyenne to Denver being such a short flight is substantially higher than what we pay because they are gunning it to get up and then to get back down.
Are we going to, are we going to discuss the, what we're going to do at the next meeting? Is that, are we going to, are we going to try to figure out what we're going to do with that, with that accent?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. So we can, we can make that budget amendment and and finish our fiscal year with that allocated as desired. And and hopefully we would know that by the May thirteenth, but again, we we might not know that what the county's role is going to be at that point.
Yes, Mr. Butterfield, I mean, looking ahead to fiscal year twenty-seven, then I mean, my math is, you know, napkin math here, it's pretty poor, but if we were to contribute and and if, and not the county, right? I mean, again, I don't think we should count on that. So let's say we put in eight hundred thousand, you're leaving fiscal year twenty-six with three hundred and thirty. This is all very iffy about fuel costs and all that, but let's play with these numbers, right? If the MRG is the same for twenty-seven, it'll probably go up. I mean, there's still a significant shortfall there for fiscal year twenty-seven and there wouldn't be any collections that'd be meaningful if I'm correct, even if the taxpayers were to agree to something on the ballot in in calendar year twenty-six. So I mean, it looks to me like around the tune of half a million. Don't quote me on that, Marit, in the paper. It's terrible math. But what are your, what are you thinking for that?
Mayor, Councilwoman, yeah, I would, I would first say that it would be ideal if we could receive funds sufficient to get us to the potential receipt of another tax initiative or ballot initiative. And again, using maybe some rough numbers, that would look to be about one point four million dollars. And so and I want to make sure I do that correctly, but anywhere between a million to one point four million.
And the other revenue pots seem possibly non-existent, so then it's service cuts or operation cuts. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seen any. Thank you very much for for coming again and giving us all this information. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So with that, now I do remember, even though it is a work session, can we get a motion to adjourn? And a second. Okay, motioned by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Dan Hahn. Call for the question, Councilmember Josh Hahn.
Yes.
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 And yes, thank you all.